Do we have supervisor crew on? Bring the meeting in order of Amador County Border Supervisors. Today is May thirteenth, 2025. We just came out of closed session and 1A, nothing to report. 2A, uh, claim was denied. 2B, the claim was denied. 3A, a pray, um, the claim was approved and the confidential minutes were approved. So wouldn't mind standing and taking your hats off for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Public matter is not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Border Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute time limit.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh.
Can we address supervisor crew first?
Yes, sir. Um, supervisor Cruz is via remote and I need the board to approve that being via remote.
So moved.
Do we have, who's the second? Okay, Brian was the second. Jennifer, would you call for the vote?
Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. And now we're back to public matters, not on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Dwayne Van Huisen. I, um, have given you a handout that I would like to go through. I've got three minutes to do it, so I'm gonna talk fast. And I basically wanna put into the record a concern that we have regarding Jackson Gate Road and the new hotel project that Ron Reagan is, uh, planning to build on the property. So without much ado, and I know there's a lot of people here and I don't have information for them, but we'll just do the best that we can. The information is in front of you and this is purely informational. So right out of the chute on, on exhibit one, right here, I have a, uh, map, a partial map of the area. You can see labeled A is five acres on the corner of Highway forty-nine and eighty-eight. I currently own that property. Uh, next to that is partial B, which is twenty-one acres owned by the Bryson family. That property is an escrow and, uh, we will be closing escrow on that property. That property fronts on Jackson Gate Road. Partial C on this map shows the hotel project, uh, at the corner of Jackson Gate Road and Highway forty-nine. So that's exhibit one, so let's go to exhibit two. And exhibit two is in there just for a reference, uh, for what we're talking about, putting things in perspective. Exhibit two is a picture or aerial of the Amador Ridge Shopping Center. That's where Lowe's and Safeway is, everybody knows where it is. If you look at the, uh, the size of it, it's forty-four acres. That whole center is forty-four acres. Exhibit three, the next page, is a detailed aerial photograph of the entrance into a forty-four acre shopping center. Two lanes in, three lanes out, with a median, landscape median further down. That was what was determined to handle a forty-four acre development. Exhibit four. Exhibit four is, right there for everybody. Exhibit four is the commercial that is comprised of everything at the corner of Jackson Gate Road and Highway forty-nine. That land is fifty-nine acres, basically one, uh, thirty-three percent greater than Amador Ridge, fifty-nine acres. If you look down here at the bottom, there's one lane in and one lane out on Jackson Gate Road to service what will be eventually fifty-nine acres of existing zoned commercial and industrial property. Essentially, one lane in, one lane out is not sufficient. So that's exhibit four. Exhibit five, I went out to Jackson Gate Road, I measured it, it's just an inch and a half above nine feet wide. That's a problem. You got PG and E trucks, they're eight and a half feet. You've got those forty or fifty RV diesel pushers, they're eight and a half feet. You have Vince Segarra's industrial property or industrial equipment, that's eight and a half feet. Jackson Gate Road at this point is nine feet wide. Let's go to the next one, paid, or exhibit six.
Well, let's go ahead and get to your final comments.
What's that?
Let's go ahead and get to your final comments.
Okay. So how much time do I have?
You're done. No, I mean, go ahead and bring up.
Okay, because I'm getting to the, you know, the essence of it. Okay, exhibit six shows no shoulder, no curb, no gutter, no drain each, no sidewalk on Jackson Gate Road, right there. I'll get quick now, 'cause I know you wanna move on. Exhibit seven is the list of conditions that you imposed on the, on the, uh, Ronald Reagan's hotel project. Paragraph thirteen says improvements on Jackson Gate Road for the hotel. Just a overlay of asphalt, no curb, no gutter, no sidewalk, no pipe drain each.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't the board, that was the planning commission, because it was a.
Yeah, I, I understand, yeah, yeah, I understand that. I have a problem with that condition, that, uh, and at the top of this list of conditions, it shows the environmental document to be exempt, meaning no significant impacts that this project has on whether it's transportation or otherwise. That's number seven, that's, that's, uh, exhibit seven. Exhibit eight is a letter from Caltrans to the planning department that basically says access from Depot Road is questionable, Caltrans may or may not allow it. And that means all access on this hotel project will be in and out of Jackson Gate Road. And we see the condition of Jackson Gate Road. It also requires a, uh, traffic study, and that was five months ago they required it. I don't know, I did talk to Ronald Reagan and I was expecting him to be here, to give him a packet, uh, and, and, and I will sum my, summarize my comments in just about fifteen more seconds. Number nine, the last exhibit, it shows access right here, coming out of my twenty-one acres, which could be as much as six thousand trip-ins per day. And it shows access going into the hotel in a collision course right there, with no left turn lane in the middle of Jackson Gate Road, much less leaving Jackson Gate Road just the way it is. Bottom line, folks, it's not gonna work. What was done, what was planned, what, what is put on paper, it's not gonna work. Now here's what I've done, I've contacted Ron, I've never met him before, I'm a fellow developer, I contacted him, and the good news is, him and I are gonna sit down, we're gonna try to work something out, we're gonna take whatever we work out, we're gonna take it to Caltrans, we're gonna see if Caltrans is happy with it. If Caltrans is happy with it, we're gonna bring it to the county. If county is happy with it, then we can move forward and it works for everybody. Right now, this doesn't work for virtually anybody at, uh, other than the developer who can save about a quarter of a million dollars in street work. And, and I'm just saying that this is a problem that's not gonna go away. So we need to fix it and I'm gonna be doing my utmost to make it happen, with Ron, with Caltrans, but in case it doesn't, I'll be back.
Thank you, sir.
Sounds like Arnold Schwarzenegger.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, have you talked to the planning department?
I've talked to the planning department and here's my.
Did you talk to the planning department about improvements to Jackson Gate Road? Because my understanding is, when he developed the other side of the street, he had offered dedication, he offered dedication on the hotel side, so.
Well.
Check, 'cause this, because the project you're talking about was just a height variance use permit.
Yeah, and that's very interesting, because there was no site plan on any of those public hearings, there was no renderings, there was nothing to give the public what was planned there, and I had to find out in a roundabout way the fact that Jackson Gate Road is remaining the same, according to, to the paragraph thirteen in the conditions.
That's a different project. Go talk to the planning department and ask them if there are plans for improvements to Jackson Gate Road. Check with them, because I may be wrong, but my understanding is he did have to offer dedication for a different project, not the height use permit.
I think you might be commingling projects. I was very specific and clear when I went in there and asked them about the hotel project and what was required. This is the conditions of the hotel project, not some project that occurred in the past. And it's dealing with an existing road that, that I feel is, is, is of major, major concern and needs to be addressed because it's a life and health and safety issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any other public?
You know, um, I have a question for Greg. Is this something that could be addressed when they go in for an encroachment permit?
I, I don't think so, because, anyway, I don't think the, the width of Jackson Gate Road was dealt with in the height use permit. It was dealt with.
Right.
Separately.
Correct.
So if, if Jackson Gate Road is not to be widened at any point, if there's no offer of dedication there along his front, on, along the frontage there, then we can look at if there's a way that the county can sort of get a second, um, opportunity to require dedication and improvement to Jackson Gate Road. But my understanding is that's been done already.
I think for our right, right-hand turn lane only, I believe. But, um, far as the, and I think also we probably couldn't condition as far as, um, with the height upon road improvements.
Well, I think it's too late to revisit that, that project. The time even for reconsideration is past.
Is it, I thought it was, was it a meeting before then?
It's, it's the, it's the very next meeting after the action, which I think has already happened.
Okay, maybe I skipped the meeting, I thought, I thought we're the next meeting that maybe already had one in between.
I think so.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Anything else from the other board members? Uh, for myself, um, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to every, everyone for your well wishes for my wife Suzanne. Your message of support and encouragement mean a ton to us. For most of you that don't know, my wife fell on Sunday and broke her femur right near her hip replacement, and, uh, I've had so many phone calls of encouragement and help, so I, I truly appreciate everybody, you know, especially the board, staff, and everybody else. Sorry about losing it there, but she's the most important thing in my life right now, so I'd like to say thank you. And, uh, one other item, uh, from my District Three Community Council, Rotary is wanting to put some more, um, playground equipment in at Pioneer Park, so we'll need to set up some type of MOU to allow that to happen. So for the agenda, we need to add addendum, uh, one A, and I'm gonna put it in spot five B two, and, uh, addendum two A to five B one. Oh, let me get myself together here, excuse me. Um, today we're honoring a resolution to James King upon his retirement of the county of Amador.
We need to approve agenda.
Oh, sue, I'm sorry, see, I'm losing it already. Motion to approve the, uh, the agenda as, uh, changed?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Okay, that passes five zero. Supervisor Ezra Epperson does first, Supervisor Carnell is the second. Okay, we're on to the, uh, actually approval of the items on the consent agenda. Does anybody from the public have anything to speak on the consent? Anything from the board members? Okay.
Motion to approve consent.
Okay, Supervisor Onetto, motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Supervisor Epperson is what I heard first. Call for the vote?
Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Okay, now we're on to five A probation department. So I was gonna read the, uh, resolution first. Whereas James King was born on September fourteenth, nineteen sixty-eight, to Christine and Hank King in Stockton, California. James lived in Stockton, California until the age of one, when his family moved to Amador City, California. He graduated from Amador High School in nineteen sixty-eight and attended San Joaquin Delta College for Criminal Justice. After completion of his associate degree, he transferred to the National University, earned a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice. In nineteen ninety, he returned to San Joaquin Delta College, attending the Delta College Police Academy, class of ten ninety. James met the love of his life and best friend Lori King while attending junior college at Delta College. They were married on November twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety, and will celebrate their thirty-fifth anniversary this November. And whereas James is a very proud father of his two daughters Alexis and Elizabeth, both of whom graduate from Amador High School in two thousand eleven and two thousand fifteen respectively. Alexis attended college and earned a PhD at the University of Ilhonohe, Urbana Campinae. She is now a professor at University of the Pacific. Elizabeth currently lives in Ashland, Oregon. She earned her master's degree of arts, master's of arts degree, uh, with her teaching credentials and teaching art as a Southern Medford High School. You know, your kids did so great, awesome. Um, excuse me, I lost my train here, Elizabeth married Ryan Null in two thousand twenty-two. They welcomed their first daughter, Eleanor Ruth, in, in September twenty twenty-four. James loves baseball, specifically the Chicago Cubs. I don't know about that, you know?
I know about that.
Okay, there we go, you got backup. He has traveled to Chicago on three separate occasions to see his team play in the friendly confines of Wrigley Field. In twenty sixteen, the Chicago Cubs overcame the hundred-year drought, winning the World Series. He loves to travel with his wife and children, uh, as often as possible. In twenty eighteen, James and his wife traveled to Iceland, Denmark, and Belgium. After retiring, he plans to travel to Italy, Ireland, to discover more of what the world has to offer. Whereas James started with Amador County Probation Department on March ninth, nineteen ninety-eight, as a probation, deputy probation officer one. In March of, uh, twen- two thousand, he was promoted to the rank of deputy probation officer two, and subsequently promoted to deputy probation officer, officer three. In March of, uh, two thousand five and two thousand twelve, he was promoted to probation unit supervisor, where he has served as, in that, this capacity until his retirement. James is assigned to every unit within the department, is also assigned to the Amador Narcotics Enforcement Unit for nearly three years. His tenure with the probation department, James served as the department's first defensive tactics instructor, the department's first farza firearms instructor. Served from two thousand one until twenty twenty-two. James has, uh, rendered over twenty-seven faithful years of dedicated service to Amador County. He is thankful, honored to have worked for the county probation department and will cherish his friendship and memories he has made throughout his career.
Thank you, sir. Um, my name is Darren Brodel, I'm the chief probation officer currently, I've only been so for about a month. Uh, there's a couple people I'd like to recognize, um, James's family is here, his wife Lori, and his daughter Alexis. Um, in addition to that, uh, from our department years past, retired chief Benini is here, and I'd especially like to recognize, I'm retired chief Mike Bagnell, who hired James King in nineteen ninety-eight. And, uh, just a couple of highlights, I promised James I would keep this short, because it's about him, not us. Um, James is the reason, just so you guys are aware, we're so conscious about our overtime budget at the probation department and have been for over two decades. Uh, he, uh, he, he took it upon himself to, uh, make that a point early on in his career, so we've been very diligent with that. Um, in addition, we're losing a lot of juvenile experience, even though I don't think he ever wanted to work with juveniles. It turned out to be a great asset for our department over the years.
Well, he did such a wonderful job with his daughters, you know, why not?
I agree, I agree. So, thank you, James.
Uh, like I said, uh, like Darren said, uh, thank you to Mike Bagnell for actually.
Can I, can I ask a favor? Go ahead and jump on the other side of podium and bring the mic back to you, there you go.
Uh, I'd really like to thank Mike Bagnell for giving me the opportunity to come back to Amador. Uh, literally, when I knew that he was gonna be chief of Amador County, I ran into his office in San Joaquin and begged him for a job here. Um, so I was his first hire and I really appreciate Mike, uh, giving me that opportunity for coming home. Uh, thanks to Chief Benini for actually giving me an opportunity to become a supervisor and help lead our department. Um, it's been a long road and I'd like to thank him for, uh, his vision for what our department has become. Thank you to the men, men and women of our department, you guys are awesome and I will miss you the most. Not the job, just you. Uh, thanks for Jackson and, and Ezra from the investigator's office and Gary for showing up, I appreciate your time and coming out. Stan, I wish you well with, uh, you and Turley and hope for your healing goes well. Appreciate it. Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak about James? Okay. If there's supervisors?
Guys, thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Was your dad my geometry teacher?
He was the band teacher at Amador.
And geometry, I think.
He did, he did math for a little bit, yes.
I just didn't want to admit I was in band.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second, go ahead.
Call for the vote?
Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Okay, that passes five zero.
Autograph time.
And I'd say thank you for your service and wish you well in Italy.
There you go, man. I don't know about Ireland.
We'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to five B, resolution declaring May Mental Health Matters Month. I'm gonna read the resolution again first and then we'll get to you guys. Look, I'm gonna let the crowd clear too.
Kinda cleared it out.
Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution here. Whereas mental health is an essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas mental health and health conditions affect children, adults and their families, and whereas mental health challenges affect of one out of five adults and one out of seven children between the ages of three and seventeen in California, impacting both the person experiencing the mental health challenges and those persons who care and love the, the persons facing the challenge. And whereas, out of every twenty-four Californians with mental, serious mental illness have difficulty functioning in everyday life, it left untreated have life expectancy of twenty-five years shorter than the general population. And whereas every day, millions of people face stigma related to the mental health and may feel isolated and alone, going years before receiving any help, and whereas recovering can and does ha- uh, happen, all Californians should know that support and help is available regardless of any individual situation. Whereas creating a community where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for the support they deserve and crucial to end the stigma around the mental health. And whereas access to support and ending the stigma of, is of paramount importance, and whereas the county, I mean, Amador County Board of Supervisors wishes to enhance the public awareness of mental health now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. I'm Melissa Cilio, I'm your program coordinator with Amador County Behavioral Health. I'm joined here this morning by our director, Melissa Cranfield, as well as our community-based partners, Sierra Wind. Uh, we have Trixie Smith, our patient rights advocate, and Trina Ozier, our program manager with Sierra Wind. And then we also have a few folks in the, the audience, I'd like to invite them to Stand Nexus, um, and other community-based providers who work every day to improve community well-being, thank you for all you do. A Mental Health Awareness Month was established in nineteen forty-nine to increase awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness in Americans' lives and to celebrate recovery from mental illness. We want to thank the Amador County Board of Supervisors for bringing awareness this month about the vital role mental health plays in our overall health and well-being. mental health plays in our overall health and well-being. Mental health awareness plays a crucial role in reducing stigma, encouraging early intervention, and fostering empathy and understanding by normalizing conversations around mental health. It nurtures a more compassionate community where individuals feel empowered to seek help, leading to improved mental well-being. Without treatment, mental health disorders can reach a crisis point. Amador County Behavioral Health encourages everyone experiencing a mental health challenge to talk to a mental health professional. Asking for help is a sign of strength and the first step towards achieving mental wellness and recovery. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else want to speak on this subject? Board of Supervisors? So again, do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Okay. Supervisor Carnell moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Supervisor Epperson, call for the vote?
Chairman Crewe?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Okay, that passes 5-0. And again, photograph time. Okay, we are on 5B1. Probation Department Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Review of Budget Unit 2350, Probation and 2390 Local Community Corrections, AB 109. Suggested action is direction to staff.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, sir.
After Thursday, I told you I'd be back, given a little time. I want to thank Sarah Hale, our Fiscal Tech or Program Manager. She was able to crunch some numbers as requested. I know Supervisor Crewe wanted to see it in writing, and you guys agreed. So I submitted a new 2350 budget yesterday to the CAO, and I trust you guys all have it. Okay. It does, we did document the salary savings as requested, and it shows if we were to actually fill all three positions that are going to be vacant as of Thursday, it would be savings of roughly $100,000, $99,460 to be exact. And that would be, that's a conservative figure because we did factor in possibly having one lateral higher. So it does note that. So there's a chance it could be higher. I want to say there's a guarantee, but I don't want to put a guarantee on it because it takes a few months to get people hired. So what you're not seeing there in addition to that is the additional salary savings that were, that will go into 2526. But we did put a hard number on it as requested, and I hope that's satisfactory to the board.
You know, we're running that time of the budget and the time of the season, so we're just trying to make sure we're doing everything we can to help out with our roads because our roads have just become the most critical thing virtually in the county.
Absolutely. I hope I've done that for you.
So we truly appreciate what you've done. Anything else from the public on this? Okay, back to the board. Anybody?
No, I will say, yeah, I do appreciate you doing this. I wish it had been done earlier, but I understand you're kind of new in the position, so.
Well, I do think there was a breakdown in communication at some point. I did check with Sarah, and we didn't feel like we had had notice either way that the numbers were wanted. I mean, I think we came in with the approach that, hey, we're not changing anything. We're not raising anything. We're going to make sure we're status quo. We know we're going to have the savings. I mean, had I known.
You know, part of the problem was, is it wasn't until we got through everything and then just before this meeting, we're like, we've got a hole. We have to figure out where to fill that hole. And so you, the sheriff, have done, you know, a commendable job trying to help us.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Actually, it was a good learning experience, so I appreciate it.
I'd just add that next year doesn't look better. So this is like an ongoing effort that we're going to keep trying to be. We are government agencies. There's no way that we can't become more efficient. So let's just keep working at it.
I understand.
So Chuck, is this something we have to do a motion for, or is this just direction?
Just like part of the budget workshop. And we will incorporate this into the final budget or the proposed budget, which we'll bring back in June.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members.
Thank you for your hard pencil.
Excellent effort.
Okay, we're on to 5B2. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Change of Appointment for Chairman and Vice Chair. Chairman Crewe has some medical conditions that he's going to be out of pocket for a little while. So Chairman Crewe and I have spoken, and we're going to see about swapping. And so I would stay chair, because he's already been chair for a little bit. I would stay chair to February of 2026. At that time, we would revert back to Chairman Crewe, because hopefully by that time, he's good. And then my suggestion is Supervisor Epperson become Vice Chair at that time. And that's... Any thoughts on that, Chairman Crewe? I mean, is that what we agreed on?
Yes, it is.
So thoughts from the board?
Seems logical because Pat's having some medical issues, and he needs to get himself and keep himself in good health and take care of that.
And the chairman needs to be in the office, which is the main thing for me that... There's going to be three months. I'll just be on Zoom in the meetings probably.
Hey, wish you well and a speedy recovery, and thank you for your confidence. Appreciate that.
So that's the funny portion of all this conversation. So where did we have this conversation? The chairman and I were having a conversation at UC Davis in the emergency room. He's there. I'm there for my wife. Of course, my sister and niece kicked me out of seeing my wife so they could go see her. So who rolls up is our chairman, six degrees of Amador. You know, it's just one of the things. So... Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, all the other board members sent you a note. I came to see you.
Yeah, that's it. And I truly appreciate that, and I appreciate you seeing you and your beautiful bride.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So I move that Supervisor Brown takes over the chair until February 26. And then Pat would reclaim his crown.
The end of February, I should say.
The end of February of next year.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
What was that Supervisor, I mean, Crewe?
Do you want to add Dan as the Vice Chair all in one?
Yes, and the Vice Chair be Supervisor Epperson? Is, are you?
Oh, yeah, for sure. I move for that.
Incurrent with that?
That's fine.
And Supervisor Onetto is good with it? Okay, call for the vote.
Chairman Crewe?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
And Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Okay, now I'm officially chairman. So now we will go on to 5C. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to a proposal by the Pine Grove Town Trustees to transfer the existing fire station and park in Pine Grove to the county.
Good morning.
We conflated two of the items. We meant to pull this item and this one. We were going to talk about the item 5D was the one about the cemetery.
Right. This is the park.
This is the park. We were going to pull this one, and I forgot the... 5C, 5D is this one.
I don't think this, we should pull this or skip this.
Skip 5C. Yeah.
So we're skipping 5?
Skip 5C, go to 5D.
So are we bringing it up to the next meeting, or are we just canceling it altogether?
Because the CSD already owns the park.
No, no, they don't.
There's a deed, there's a, yeah, the trustees transferred it to Pine Grove Community Services District.
I thought that was misfiled.
No, I've seen it. It's...
We'll pursue it, and if we need to bring it back again, we'll bring it back again.
The impression CSD cannot own public land.
Under their charter, they can't own public land.
Okay, that's for another day, I guess.
That's why we're pulling it. Let's get that straight.
Yeah, let's do 5D.
Okay. So we're on to 5D. Consideration of Resolution Approving the Transfer of the Pine Grove Cemetery by the Pine Grove Town Site Trustees.
Hi, I'm Sandy Travaskis. This is Linda Brizzy. I was sworn in in 19... As far as we can tell, the trusteeship started in the 1800s. They were sworn in by the county Superior Court. I was the last one. Keith Brizzy was at 1996. I was in 1998. In 1999, our third person passed away, and we went through the court system and tried to get another person. That's when all of this started of who owns the cemetery, who owns what, and what is the trustee's job. Through the years, you've gone through several attorneys that have said, you know, we have a lot going on. This is really messy. We can't take care of it. And here we are 26 years later. Mr. Brizzy is currently hospitalized, and he's in massive physical therapy. He does the groundskeeping, and I have to have surgery this year. And we really need the county to figure this out. It shows like in 1999, Deputy Allison Daw did some research to and found that it's the Board of Supervisors responsibility because it was a township years ago. And I realize that things are a lot different than 150 years ago, but we do need to resolve this because, for one, we're at a liability, and, two, we just can't do it anymore. The front parcel, Section 1 and 2, when it was purchased like in the 1800s, it was a schoolyard, and it was transferred over to the town trustees at that time. And then the other property in the back, Section 3 and 4, was donated by some local people. But there's still a lot of confusion on the four parcels, three parcels is what I found. So we just need to get this resolved and turn it over. We have been talking to like Denary's about possibly taking it over. If not, you Board of Supervisors are going to have to do something. We were going to force the issue with putting in our resignation, but to be honest with you, these people bought plots so they can have a peaceful area to be buried, and their families can come. And I can't see, and especially the Brizzy's because it's their baby, just letting it go and shutting the gates. We have currently apparently almost 1,900 plots in this four sections. That's not including the old cemetery. We do have 265 that have been purchased. So when they pass away, we're going to have to be able to accommodate them with locating where they are to be buried. So I don't know what we want to do from here.
So there's roughly also 100?
We have 100 plots still can be sold, which, if we're going to be in limbo and we need to stop selling them for a minute, we can. But we still have the issue of 265 people who have purchased lots, plots, and they need to be buried eventually.
Greg? So...
And there is a piece of land that is still vacant that's not, that we could not develop at all if need be, or you don't need to be...
What piece of the land is that?
5 and 6.
Section 5 and 6. Because 1 and 2 is on the east side or the west side of the old cemetery. Section 3 and 4 is on the east side of the old cemetery. And then there's a 5 and 6 that still hasn't been, nothing has been sold. It hasn't even been developed with the markers to mark the graves.
So that could be...
The 5 and 6 are still within those three cemetery legal parcels? Yeah, okay.
And it butts up to the Mobile Hall Park.
So 5 and 6 could be additional sites beyond?
Yeah, we figured they have the potential for 300 more sites.
Okay.
Once the others are full, you can sell 300 more sites.
So a lot of what Ms. Travaskis has covered is addressed in the memo that's in your packet. And yeah, so I believe that the trustees do own two of the parcels because the school lot, in my research, was sold to the CSD, and then the CSD gave it to the trustees. And then the top piece was given...
Yeah, because that was in 1978.
And then the cemetery piece potentially was the county's, but the trustees have, for over 100 years, have managed it. And so my recommendation is that if Denary's is still interested and willing and that the trustees feel like that's a viable alternative, that the board supports that, and the county can facilitate that transfer, working with the title company, get deeds drawn up from the trustees to Denary. And then the board's resolution sort of approves that scenario. And if that doesn't work, then I think we come back here and the county will have to figure out how to manage the cemetery.
Okay, but what I would like is not that the county would have to figure it out. I'd like a timeframe because we can continue to, I don't, find somebody to help us or something, mow and... I mean, we could take the calls, sell the plots, mark the plots, but to physically go out and do the mowing and the weeding and all that stuff anymore, it's just, we need some help. And nobody likes to volunteer anymore or help out. So what do you suggest, what are you looking at timeline? Have we heard from Denary's?
No.
So...
They said they needed a few weeks, and we're at the end of those few weeks. So you're asking the board to...
I'm asking the board to give me a timeline of when you're going to handle this. Otherwise, we are going to have to force the envelope and turn in a resignation because we don't know what else to do because...
Whether you do that or not, the county is going to have to figure it out.
Right.
So whatever time the county takes, the county takes. Whether you resign today or resign in two weeks.
We'll do our best, but we kind of can't give you a timeline exactly. I'm pretty sure from what I'm seeing, it's that critical point. So it's going to happen, just a matter of who, where, and how.
And with all due respect, you have to understand where I'm coming from. We've been doing this for 27 years with the county. So it does, just even out of the respect for the people who've bought plots there, we can't just say, oh, my gosh, that was a long time ago. This doesn't exist anymore. We're not going to take care of it. I'd like to know that there's going to be due diligence.
I don't think that's what's going to happen.
Okay.
We've got your message. Sandy, we have your message.
Yes.
You know, and the biggest thing here right now is that, to believe it or not, it would be easier for, if you transferred it to us as the county, and we can't take care of it either, because you've already seen what our budget cuts, you know, we're already doing. And so I don't want it to be disrespected at all.
Right.
So I'm hoping we can get this coordinated between you yourselves and Denary's with our blessings and, you know, a proper operation that can handle that type of a system. That's what we're shooting for, and that's what we want to see done. But we need to get everybody on the same page.
So can, since there's a dispute on what our job really is as a trustee, and now it might be down to just me, Keith can't even write right now. So can, since there's a dispute on what our job really is as trustee and now it might be down to just me, Keith can't even write right now. Um, do you guys just take and sign that property over to yourselves? Are we gonna have to sign something?
Yeah, you, you're, you will, because you're, yeah, as the last trustee, you will probably have to be the one that pay, you know, that signs that over, that, the, because we're gonna open up, in the county, we've already kind of agreed on that, we'll open up a, a title transfer.
Okay.
And to, to do that portion of it, and the county will pay for that portion of, of the title transfer from, to assist you in that aspect.
Okay.
And so, um, so this is happening. It's just, I can't give you a timeline.
I know, and I just hope you understand my frustration. And I'm sorry it's dropped on all of your laps, but we actually have tried really hard in the last, you know, twenty years.
We just need to get everything coordinated, everybody on the same page. And that's, you know, we're, we're working toward that. But, um, right now, our resolution is to assist you in the transfer. But if it comes to us, it just makes it a lot harder and a lot more costly because we can't give land away. You know, and that's, you know, and that would become a sticking point, you know, and that's what we don't want to have, to have happen.
Well, and that's what the other concern of mine is, is, um, like a release of liability for me signing something over and it wasn't legit or.
We're working, you know, you've got a county council, you know, so we're involved in this whole, this whole process.
You've done that already. You, I know that you signed deeds in two thousand. I don't know why those were never recorded. But in two thousand eight, you signed a deed to the county.
Right.
The county, if, if underlying all this, the county is responsible, although I think you fairly do own two of the parcels. Because they were given to you. They were never owned by the county. They never were.
But in.
So.
Technicality, it was given to the trustees, which was operating under the county.
Nope. The school lot was given to the school district. The school district sold it to the CSD. The CSD gave it to the trustees. County was never part of that, that parcel. And the top piece was given, I forget their names, to the trustees. So the, so, so I, I think you're clear, in the clear on two of the parcels and the county is blessing you to transfer it to Denary by this resolution. We will work on that as fast as possible. If that doesn't work, then we'll be back here, probably appointing a cemetery, uh, board.
Okay.
To manage the district, manage the cemetery.
But just like anything else, you need the volunteers to do that, you know, so that's what we don't want to see happen and, and try to pull hairs again, so.
One thing I'd say, Sandy, too, is I would stop selling plots. Because if Denary is interested and say all of a sudden you sell a hundred plots, you know, they're gonna probably be less interested, I'd think.
Well, and that was my thought until we can, and the problem is if Brian Onetto has a plot and his family wants to go next to him, you know, what do we, what do we do? But I could tell him, and we can't say, hey, don't die for eight more months because I can't sell you anything. So.
Sold two plots.
I mean, dying needs to stop for ninety days.
I'll say this, Sandy, on a case like that, yeah, you could probably sell the plot. But Sandy, I want to buy future plots.
Then put a hold on it. Okay, I agree with you there.
Sandy, what the annual maintenance costs are just ballpark. And there, there's some money in the fund and all that. Um, any insight there?
What do you think annual costs are? She does all the bookkeeping. Um, right now, we have almost seventy thousand in accounts. So we keep a majority into it, into a CD, and when it comes due, we take enough out for the year.
Okay.
Um.
About eight thousand a year.
Yeah, around eight thousand a year.
So, but that's just cost that's not counting Keith's labor.
No, that's counting Keith's labor.
They do put, well, they do get paid a small amount for doing it.
Oh, okay.
And then, but maintenance of the mower, the water, um, anything that breaks.
Power.
Yeah.
Now, I assume all that stuff will be transferred to the new owner. That's.
Correct.
I guess the intention.
That's what we said. If we can get someone like Denary's to take it over, we're willing just to transfer the funds that are available to them.
Okay.
Um.
Funds and, and equipment type of thing?
Everything, yeah. And they had come up and they looked at everything that we have and we've told them the finances, so we're just waiting to hear. But we just need it back. So if they say no, you're still going forward, right? Or do we have to come back and renegotiate?
If, if they say no, then the, then the county, I assume, has to figure out how to manage a cemetery.
Perfect.
Do, does the county have cemetery boards already? Like I own those, a lot of the entities do. I'm not sure.
Well, that's what happened was years ago, when this started, there was a big thing in the county of who owns what cemeteries, Dry Town Cemetery, Fiddletown Cemetery, so.
Okay.
There are historic cemetery boards, but I don't, um, like for Dry Town and I think there's one in.
Fiddletown?
Fiddletown.
Yeah.
All right.
Could you let Keith know from the board how appreciative we are for his thirty years of sacrifice for this and you and all of you? And we're, we're gonna get this right. Something's gonna happen.
He just retired from AFPD a few years ago. So he, he has been the volunteer of volunteers.
He does so many things that the people don't even realize how much he does.
Right.
He was gonna watch this online, but he had physical therapy, so he's gonna watch it later.
Well, they're about to figure out some of the things that he did.
Yeah, that's very good.
No, I, I will say, Logan, you beat me to it, but yeah, it's, um, I'll say this, there's a lot of people that tell you how nice they are and how good they are. Um, I've never had Keith Brizzy ever tell me how nice or good he was, but he was always out doing good and.
Always been there.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's just who he is.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion? Or let's say anything from the public wants to say anything? Back to supervisors. Um, do I have a motion, a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, Supervisor Cornell.
I'll second that.
Supervisor Neto, second. Call for the vote.
Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
I'm chair now.
Chairman?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Oh, too funny.
And let me know if you need help mowing. I'll come help.
We're gonna go on Monday.
I'm gonna mow Thursday.
You are by yourself?
Anybody listening and seeing who's houted out to mow, if you're thinking about volunteering for something, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to five E. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Annual Compliance Review of the Use Permit Conditions of Approval of the, for the Hideout at Kirkwood Event Venue. The annual review was included in the board's twenty twenty-three approval of the project zone change and use permit for an event venue. The board reviewed the compliance on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four and requested an update on May twenty twenty-five.
Good morning. Chuck May, Planning Department. Um, as you just said, the board approved the, the Hideout Project's use permit in twenty twenty-three. We, you requested, it wasn't a condition in the conditions of approval, but in your approval of that project, you asked us to bring back a compliance review within a year. We did that in October. And then you asked us to bring that back to you again in, in May of this year. Um, when we met in October, there were thirty-six of fifty conditions had been, had been satisfied. Um, I know the conditions of approval list fifty-one, but there is no twenty, number twenty-one for some reason. So there are only fifty conditions of approval. Uh, as of this week, we're up to, uh, satisfaction of forty-five of those conditions, and I think a couple of those will probably be satisfied, um, either this spring or this summer. Uh, the, the ones that are left over are the, the deviation for the road being longer than, uh, a mile long to, to access the, uh, the property. Um, there's, community development staff is required to issue a deviation for that if certain conditions are met. The one outstanding item is the stream crossing and, um, they just won't be able to get to that until there's dry enough weather to put in, to get a stream alteration agreement and to put in a, a, a concrete crossing there that actually, you know, just dips in and then comes back out of the stream. That is sufficient enough to handle a seventy-five thousand pound fire truck. That's, that's what, that's the remaining item.
My Subaru Impreza had the ground cle, doesn't have any ground clearance and it can make it there, so that's kind of a.
I thought they had a pretty good steam, stream crossing there, but I guess they had to rip it out.
There, there was one over the stream, yeah, with, with, with drainage pipes underneath it, but that, that was removed.
Yes, I remember. It looked like a pretty nice crossing to me, but I guess they ran into the political morass.
Um, as far as our emergency contingency plan, there is one item left on that, that the adjacent property owners need to be notified in case of, 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 of an emergency event. There is one house that's adjacent to their property. That's the only one that's on the access road to, to the hideout. Uh, so that's just a, a technical matter. Uh, then there's the highway encroachment off of Highway eighty-eight. Um, I, there is an application into Caltrans for approval of the, of the existing encroachment as, as access. And then there's a matter of, 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 of condition fifty that is a little bit, we're, we're probably gonna go back to the planning commission and change that because it involves Calfire and Calfire doesn't have anything to do with evacuation, um, planning. That's AFPD's responsibility. So we'll just amend that condition to make sure that that's, um, that, that, that's their responsibility and there's no confusion there. Um, and then they'll work with the property owners to, to, to get, get that in place. But that, that's where we are now. We're at forty-five out of fifty conditions have been satisfied.
Okay.
I'll be happy to answer any questions. They're also members of.
No, it looks.
Environmental health and AFPD here if you, you want to. Most of the conditions that were left from the last time had to do with environmental health and those have been satisfied.
It looks to me like they're working pretty hard on it, so.
Good.
Good. Okay, anything from the public?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Members of the board. My name is John Munn and I'm the property owner where, uh, the easement to the hideout leaves Highway eighty-eight. Uh, I apologize for late arrival of a comment letter that I put together. Um, I sent that by email last weekend because I was gone last week when the notice arrived and so I had to work on it Saturday. In addition to what was covered in my letter, Mr. Hoover's update of the use permit condition number eight was the first that I've heard about, uh, a proposal to concrete the bottom of Corral Flat Creek Road or Corral Flat Creek Ford. I'm not opposed to this, uh, but Mr. Hoover again appears to be thinking that, uh, significant changes to the easement can be made without involving the landowner and other easement owners. Because I, I have an easement and others, along with Mr. Hoover, have an easement that goes across that Ford. I had not anticipated that there would be any additional work on the Ford and have two concerns. It sounds like they're being addressed. Uh, first, uh, Mr. Hoover needs to be responsible for the maintenance because if something too heavy drives across it and it breaks, I don't want to have to fix something that somebody else has done there. And second, whatever is done needs to support heavy equipment, which I think I just heard, and logging truck traffic. My reason for needing a Ford there instead of the crossing that was there was so that this heavy equipment could get across and so that, uh, logging, uh, plans could be approved. I'll also make brief mention about some of the issues in my letter. I'm hoping to learn from the county whether the approved use permit, which we're discussing today, needs to be activated for the zoning change, which occurred a couple of years ago, almost now, uh, can take effect. And I'm also hoping to find out what requirements of chapter fifteen thirty are being modified by deviations that are mentioned in the use permit under condition numbers eight and forty-seven, along with what measures are being proposed to replace these changes, uh, to those requirements in fifteen thirty. And that's it for me. And if you have any questions, I can try to answer them now or I'll be around for the rest of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just maybe a thought, um, if you had a second, Mr. Munn? I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know if you have any interest in having similar types of, um, activities up there near your property, but if I was you, I'd be saying, hey, can I do something similar if you were so inclined? That's, um, where I would be if I was you.
My answer to that is just I'm leaving it to the next generation.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on Zoom whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Catherine, when you're ready.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Catherine Evans, speaking as a private citizen, resident of Volcano. I just want to point out that the county has been in the process of trying to bring the hideout into conformance with county and state law for maybe five years now. And the conditional use permit was issued two years ago. And it include, the approval of the conditional use permit was based on the county's approval of a mitigated negative declaration under the California Environmental Quality Act, which included mitigations that, that became the conditions in the use permit. Technically, those conditions were all required to be in place at the time the use permit was issued. And here we are, two years later, yes, most of the conditions have been complied with, but important ones that have to do with life, safety, the length of the road and the evacuation and fire access have not. And, um, I just find it kind of shocking that the county is still comfortable with that and wonder if the county is, has any liability if people are in fact harmed and are fired there because the county has not required Mr. Hoover to comply with the permit. And the county is basically has violated the California Environmental Quality Act by not following the California, the, um, mitigated negative declaration. Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Evans, maybe. So what do you think we should do about this? I guess she's gone.
Anybody else from the public?
Uh, yeah.
Catherine Evans back in. Supervisor Crew, I'll get to you soon.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor Onetto. Um, I was muted, so I couldn't respond to your comment. And, and I just want to say, it would be really nice if I could make a comment at a Board of Supervisors meeting without your responding with some kind of question. It's really not up to me to come up with a solution for you folks to, you know.
Well, you seem pretty concerned.
Excuse me, can, can I finish? Please do not interrupt.
My apology.
I'm not done. Um, it's not up to the citizens to come up with a solution that is a county problem and is a county-created problem. You have allowed an, a resort facility to operate illegally for years. They're still operating illegally. The county violated CEQA by allowing them to operate without putting the mitigations in place. And my suggestion to you would be that you talk to your county council about whether the county or you as supervisors personally have any liability if anyone is harmed as a result of your failure to follow county code and state law. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, well, I just thought, you know, um, you were concerned. I just thought I'd like, have your input, what you'd like to see done to them. Um, and I guess you don't want to answer that, so I understand. But thank you.
Anybody else from the public? So where is our direction that we should be going for now? Oh, sorry. Didn't see you coming.
All good. Good morning. Josh Hoover from the Hideout. Yes, sir. Wanted to step up and address a couple of comments that we have remaining, answer any questions that you guys may have, um, and then go from there. As far, the main items that we're working on, as Chuck mentioned, um, I think we are working through, you know, with Caltrans, with Fish and Game, um, as far as letting the adjacent property owners know if there's a shelter in place. It's gonna, they're directly across from the lake from us. They're right there. Um, it's cell phones, it's emails, it's phone calls with them if they're actually on the property. Very rarely are those landowners there when we're operating during the summer.
You guys have a good communication between those landowners.
We have a very good relationship with them.
Okay.
Um, and so if there is an emergency, it's a matter of probably a quick text to them. And if they're on property, if they're not on. and if they're on property, if they're not on property, they're, they live in the Bay Area.
And you always, you always have somebody on site?
We're on site twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven.
One of a, one of the family owners, um, somebody from the property is always there too when, if the property is rented. The comment about the, let's see, we have the, um, emergency evacuation test drills, those items, those are all items that, and I've talked with Ashley about, those are all the testing and the training doing on site as the snow melts this summer. Um, you know, there's certain things we can't do. We're under snow still, it's starting to melt, we're almost in for the season. But once we get on site with staff, we will do all of the testing and the drills and evacuation drills, and then we'll go through all that with each guest as they arrive to check in. Um, so those are some of the items that, you know, they're on the list because we can't quite do them.
Right.
Or they're in the process of being submitted with other government agencies that.
So are you starting the forwarding permit?
With Fish and Game.
Yeah, with Fish and Game, you, with coordination of Mr. Munn?
Yes, there will be, there will be, once the snow melts, I believe Fish and Game wanted to be on site to take some measurements. Um, you know, if we have our engineers come up, they want to do it once the snow melts and they can get there to draw up the plans to submit with Fish and Game as well.
Okay.
Um, but again, we can't do some of that until.
Right.
The snow's gone and people can drive in to do any of it.
Okay.
So, um, so unfortunately, since our last meeting, we've been at the mercy of winter.
Right, no, I understand that.
But those are items that we're working on addressing. Um, I would like to thank the, all the county members that have been helping us, that we've been having meetings with all winter, um, you know, planning and fire and everybody that, with Chuck, that everybody's been very helpful to us this year. So we're trying to work through every item on, on the list and get corrected on everything and move forward for the summer.
Well, it seems like you're making a lot more progress, a lot better than last time, so I'm a lot happier about that.
Thank you. Um, we are in communications with Matt Gertner, with Amador Sheriff's Office as well for assisting. I don't know if he'll actually assist with it, but he's given me a lot of insight as far as our emergency evacuation and test drills go. So he's been pretty helpful in that aspect as well.
Okay.
So.
Any questions from the board?
Supervisor Crew, did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to compliment young Mr. Hoover. It seems like he's arrived, the pace of the compliance has picked up. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Pat.
What, is that a dig at senior?
No.
Okay.
So you project you'll have everything done other than what you have when the snow melts, other than whatever you're waiting for a government agency to provide for you?
I anticipate, yes. And when we do our walkthrough with the fire department this spring, um, I think we should be able to get on the same page with everything.
And then you'll just be waiting on Caltrans, a piece of paper from Caltrans and a piece of paper from.
That is the hope.
Wildlife.
That is the hope.
Okay.
As long as they don't come back with too many pieces of paper.
They have a lot.
Yes.
I would say, I don't know all the nuances exactly in your right, right away that you have easements, but I think it probably wouldn't hurt if you talked to Mr. Munn about the concrete crossing, just try to reach out.
Well, when the designers figure out what they have.
See what you're doing, what will work for him too.
Right. And I think, you know, the weights that we're basing everything off of for any crossing that we do there is basing it off of fire department's recommendation at seventy to seventy-five thousand pounds.
Yeah, it's one of their vehicles, but it would be a.
I'm not sure if a logging truck would exceed that.
What is a fire, what is a logging truck? Yeah, what's a logging truck weight? Actually, you should know, what does a logging truck weigh?
About eighty, probably about eighty thousand.
Okay.
So I mean, might, might be something.
It'll be very sufficient to pass.
It might be something worth talking to him, Mr. Munn, about, I think.
Yep.
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
Chuck, what, uh, what's your suggested? Since we have so many holes still sitting here.
Well, let me first.
Bring this back to the board in the fall or again?
We, we could. Um, let me first address Mr. Munn's comments because he asked.
Yes, sir.
What the, what the changes would, or what the conditions of the deviation would be. The, the, the code requires, because it's longer than, than, uh, than a mile, that it have either a twenty-foot wide continuous width, or if it can't be twenty feet wide and it's continuous width, to have adequate turnouts that would allow, um, emergency access both in and out. And I've been assured from AFPD that that's the case with the exception of the stream crossing. Um, and then the surface of the road is, is, has to be adequate to support the fire truck, that's, that's already in place, it already, we'll, we'll already do that. Um, you know, as far as your, as next steps, as we could bring it back to you in, in six months, um, that would be getting near the, I guess, near the end of their, their season to, to review it again.
And then that would, then that would be the completion time then per se?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
The Caltrans thing might take a little, yeah, that's a, that's an unknown.
Can a player, Chuck, currently make it in there?
They, they have.
Ashley and I are fire prevention officer with Amador Fire. To answer your question, we are able to get a fire engine up there this last fall after we met in October. I went up there with our fire crews from Station one eleven, and we took Engine fifty-one-eleven, which is the first out type-one engine at that station, up all the way into the facility. Made it over the hill, was a little bit of a slow climb, but it did it. Um, so yes, we are able to get into the facility.
Did you have to raise the markers up a little bit or no?
Nope. They, um, one of the requirements that we had for them was to widen that granite hill a little bit, so they took a few inches off the side of that, and in doing that allowed the engine to get through without scraping running boards.
So last time I was up there, it was pretty, pretty tight. It's good.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's a, per se, a city engine, not a backcountry engine.
No, that is, that is not a wildland engine, not built to, um, go up crazy hills, so.
Non-wildland engine made it all the way there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. A wildland engine presumably would have no problem getting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess we'll bring this back in the fall then.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like Vice Chairman Crew.
Chairman Crew, go ahead.
I just had a comment, Chuck, maybe for everybody. The people have to understand, and I don't know why Caltrans permits, we have no control over when Caltrans is going to think about it, if they're going to think about it. So the idea that we hold it up because of a Caltrans issue, we might be holding it up for years. Could we exempt that out of one of the conditions because we can't control it?
I, I don't, because that's probably a CEQA mitigation requirement, um, that they get the encroachment. What we have here is, so I don't think we've, we haven't issued the use permit, we just haven't taken enforcement action while they're, um, getting in compliance with all their use permit conditions. So they're just continuing their operation, which is pre-existed even their applications for, for entitlements.
I understand it all, Greg, thank you. I just, I can see us three years from now, still everything's done except the Caltrans use permit.
He's not wrong.
So we may be doing this every six months? Or, you know, we get to.
Thank you, CEQA.
Yeah, we get to, just to Caltrans, and then we can just, at that time.
Caltrans and Fish and Wildlife.
Okay. Well, I guess for right now, but until we're alone to Caltrans, um, we just do it every six months? Is that your suggestion?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So that was just a direction to staff, correct, Greg?
Yeah, unless you want to pick a date now?
Yeah, just set it up for the fall when, when the Hoovers and then everybody else can come. Thank you, sirs. Okay, we are on to five F, behavioral health, Danco, NPLH project update. And they're back. Hello.
Um, so we are coming back to give you an update on No Place Like Home, the Danco project, which actually has a name. Valley View Commons is going to be the name of the project, so I think that's new, I don't think that's something that we had, um, had brought to the board yet. Um, we were last here in February to get approval to apply for the gap funding through Home Key Plus, which the goal is to fill the gap for this project in order to be able to move forward and break ground. So there were, um, some things that came up, and so we wanted to let you know what the changes were, get, um, get some guidance, let you know kind of what our options are at this point in order to move the project forward. So we have Chris from Danco on Zoom to, um, explain that because he will do a much better job than I will.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Just wanted to give a brief update on our housing project and our financing strategies to move the project forward. We remain fully committed to this project and bringing it to life. Um, it aligns, it aligns well with local and statewide goals, uh, for providing this type of housing. Currently, the project has secured financing in the amount of roughly fifteen million dollars from the state with a remaining financing gap of around eleven million to complete, the capital needs to move the project forward. Um, we've been working on really two parallel financing paths. Um, one is that we've actively been pursuing, which is the low-income housing tax credit program. Now, we've applied for that program now, uh, four times and have not been successful due to the competitiveness of it. Um, no reflection of the merits of the project, it's just an extremely, uh, competitive program, and we, we haven't been able to win that competition. So the state, uh, introduced a one-time, uh, uh, program called Home Key Plus as, as an opportunity to help projects, uh, like this. So in response to the competitiveness, the state created this program, and specifically it, it, this has a component that's meant to clear the backlog of strong stalled affordable housing projects like ours. Um, and if we were successful with the Home Key Plus program, which there's an application pending now, um, the project would be able to move forward. That, that would be essentially fill the remaining eleven million dollar gap. Um, and there, we expect to hear back on that around June of this year. Caveat with that program is that a hundred percent of the units, uh, have to be at the lowest level incomes compared to the, the tax credit program. We had, we had ten units that were at a fifty percent AMI or area median income, but the Home Key program, in order to fill the gap, would require that all of the units be extremely low, um, and at the thirty percent level. Um, but, uh, we, uh, believe that, you know, we have the, we have this, uh, support and the budget, uh, set up to be able to house and, and, um, provide the services for that. You know, if that project doesn't, or if that Home Key fund does not move forward, um, then we can still, uh, go back to the tax credit option. And the difference, uh, now moving forward on the tax credits is that we recently secured, the project recently secured another seven and a half million dollar, um, grant from the state for home funds, which makes the tax credit program, uh, more competitive. It's significantly more competitive than we had in the last four tries. Um, so we're, uh, we have, we have that fallback option. The No Place Like Home Fund, that was the first funding that was secured for the project, is, um, at its term, but we did speak with the state agency and they are, they're, um, continuing to support this project, um, as long as we have a plan moving forward, which, which we do. Uh, but that is definitely something that we're, we're concerned with, is that that funding source is at its term, um, but they have committed to us that there, that it remains in, in play at least for this Home Key Plus round and the, um, in, in a future tax credit round. So in conclusion, I think, um, we're doing everything we can, uh, we're committed to this project, we've got two parallel paths going for financing. Um, what, uh, we believe that, you know, we will win one of these, uh, either the Home Key Plus or the tax credit, uh, competition, uh, coming up and that this project will, will move ahead. Um, but, uh, you know, we still got to get through that process and, um, I guess that's all my, completes my comments, and I'm here to answer any questions.
So what's our likelihood of, of getting all of this completed, either one of these paths? I mean, you know, it's, I kind of go up to the state as which one are they willing to fund, um, but, you know, you know, it's still kind of a, as I always kind of call it, a ghost money, you know, to find out where that money's coming from.
Yeah, from, we, we met with the staff at HCD last week and, um, asked them that very question, and what's the likelihood we're going to receive this Home Key Plus award? Um, and they asked us when we submitted our application, which was, um, the beginning of April, and they said, well, that's good because it's a first-come, first-served program. Um, and, you know, they couldn't tell us the, they couldn't give us a percentage, but they said, given where we, their, their take was, since we submitted it when we did, and it's for the purpose of this, exactly for this purpose, which is to clear a stalled project, that we had a high probability of that. Um, and then it, you know, we'll find out on that, uh, within thirty days is what they said. Um, and then if, if, if we weren't successful with that, our score, um, on the tax credit program went up about fifteen percent from where it was, and we anticipate that from the other competition in this rounds, that that would be a winner. So I would say a higher likelihood.
Okay.
That helps.
Any questions from the board? Good luck, I hope it goes forward.
Thank you.
Is that a great comment? I just had one question. So basically, the purpose of this is you want to, the state would like your application better if you lower, on ten of the units, you lower your, the income requirement?
Yeah, the financing for, that they offer is only for units that are at that, um, income level for this Home Key Plus program. So we wouldn't be able to fill the gap in its entirety if we have the units, the still the fifty percent AMI units, um, because they wouldn't, those ten units wouldn't qualify for the Home Key Plus program, which means we still have a remaining gap, which only leaves us one option, which is the tax credit competition. So by, given that we're, we're working to bring this project forward, you know, that is, that was our strategy, is to reduce those other ten units so that we qualify for all the financing and be able to close the gap and move the project.
Okay. How much is this being impacted by the fires down south? It's, I read some notes there saying that might be kind of one of the things pushing it back possibly, or is that, is it strictly just the time, you know, how fast you get submitted, or are they, are they bypassing other people to foster those programs down there? Is that even known?
This fund, well, what I can tell you is, what I know is that this funding program was in place prior to those fires, um, and it, the legislation already been passed on the specifics of what it's allocated for, and so I don't believe, I, I do think there, there's potential of some of this funding being allocated in fires down south, but this portion, which is to clear unstalled projects, um, wouldn't, wouldn't be affected by that.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Crew?
Yeah, Chris, I can't find it now, I'm reading through my notes, but I know you're going to have onsite management, has always been part of the, but it seems that I read in that this 10 units would include, would have preference for severely mentally ill patients.
Not the 10 units, but the No Place Like Home units have that criteria that the residents would have a mental disability. The 10 units, they have to have, they call it a behavioral health issue, but really that's different than severe mental disability, and that behavioral health could be a range of different.
Yeah, there was some difference that I was, it seemed to be then.
Yeah, there's a, you can read the specifics of that in the Home Key note for what they define as a behavioral health issue, but essentially, our work in this is that anyone that's experiencing homelessness likely qualifies for that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're severely mentally disabled. There's a distinction there.
And your staff, who's onsite, will be able to handle that?
Yeah, in coordination with behavioral health staff, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything from the public? And, I guess, we don't need to, this is just a direction?
We need to, do we make the, we need to approve the changes, or?
Bart, Melissa, what do you need?
We just wanted to make sure that it was okay for us to move forward with the change of those units so that they were all low income instead of having the 50% AMI for those 10 units. We just wanted to make sure the board was aware and okay with that before we moved forward.
What was saying that is, are you going to have to pull funding from other programs that you have to cover that, to keep the project running?
No, no. The funding that Chris was talking about, in order for us to get that funding, we have to change those units.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not affecting our other funding.
I mean, I, being military, being for service, I'm afraid that, you know, we have so many units that somebody can get into, but you have all these other units that are available, but they're, these people don't meet the qualifications, or are we getting into that type of a situation?
I know when we were talking about, initially, with No Place Like Home, we were keeping those 10 units for affordable housing, that's why it was the 50% AMI rather than the 30%. And I think, because then that would kind of help some other folks in the community that needed affordable housing. In order for us to be able to win this funding, basically, and move forward, those units would have to be changed to that lower income level. And in our discussions and based on feedback we've gotten from stakeholders, one population that seems to be affected with homelessness is our older adult and senior population. So, what we had talked about is those 10 units that we would have to reduce the income, that we could target the senior population to assist in that, which is a need in our county. And part of, when this project is going, anybody who is going to be applying to get into these units would go through the coordinated entry system. And so, there's a, you know, there's a process to ensure that those 10 units could, we would ensure that those would be prioritized for low-income seniors. And then, the other, the No Place Like Home units have to be, have to meet that criteria of severely mentally ill, and so we were just, so the difference really now would be those 10 units would be low-income seniors rather than just 50% affordable housing for anyone in the community. That's the difference.
If you didn't target seniors and you targeted working-age people, and they got one of those houses, and then they got a job, they have to move.
Well, it would be based on the income, so depending on what the income would be.
So, we're encouraging them not to produce an income at that point, unless we target seniors beyond working age. Is that correct?
Chris, can you help with that one?
Well, the seniors would fall into their, essentially, social security. If there was a couple, like for our two bedrooms, they would still qualify to live there, which is good, even at the lower-income units. And then, if people are over income, they don't have to leave. However, generally speaking, in our experience, people do. If they, you know, if they get a job and they're doing well, they would move on, and we would encourage people to, you know, free up the unit. Now, technically, they don't have to, but typically, if somebody is, has a behavioral health issue and they need support services, they would stay. We would want them to stay because they need that service. But if they don't, you know, if they're not in that situation and they can freely leave, then we encourage them to do that. That makes sense.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Give her a blessing, then, it sounds like.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Okay, we're on to 5G Public Works Agency Discussion Apostle Action Regarding Review of Budget Unit 3000, Public Works.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Chairman, Richard Vila, Public Works Director. Before you, I, as the proposed budget for Unit 3000 for Public Works. What's attached is the actual, the budget documents. I also have attached a proposed project list of projects that are in the hopper, and their anticipated construction year for them. Our budget per se, our normal operating budget doesn't change a whole lot from year to year as far as our operating expenses, you know, day-to-day maintenance activities and keeping the department running. There aren't any significant changes in that regard. Last year, when I was here, I proposed an additional two members to be added to our road crew staff, and that was kind of like, well, let's see how the Measure Q pans out and that sort of thing. Well, that didn't pan out positively, and I would normally have come back with that same request, but knowing that you've, you know, we've got some budget challenges that the county's facing, I thought I would not push that button this year, but the need is still there. I just wanted to acknowledge that. And so, depending what happens next year, it'll be back in front of the board next year for that request.
Now, there's a lot of, in this budget, there's a lot of ghost money, like, you know, the Pine Grove project, you know, depending on if that goes through.
Yeah, there is, I mean, the actual dollar amount seems really large. A lot of it is tied up with projects that have, for example, Pine Grove project's got $9 million of funding, that's all it can be used for.
Right.
We don't do that project, all that money goes away. There's some other projects here that we've secured funding through the State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, down on Buena Vista, on Fiddle Town Road and Shake Ridge Road. Those are dedicated for those projects. They can't be taken and be used somewhere else. Those are funds that were applied for through the allocation that ACT seeing to be, to go out for construction. And so, that step there puts another two months into the schedule, and I was hoping we'd have these projects out to bid, you know, either now or into June, but sometimes that's, you know, the strings that are attached when you're using someone else's money. So, it's good that we have it, but there are, sometimes you have these scheduling constraints and procedural constraints that dictate schedule.
Now, Shake Ridge Road up there, has it stopped, has it stabilized?
The upper?
Oh, the upper, yes. In my mind, yes. I mean, let's put that in perspective, that section you're talking about from wandering hills up to the state highway connection, I mean, it's built on a severe side slope. It was an old logging road that was expanded. The part that you're referring to, we've monitored over the last four years, and we haven't detected any movement on that. We've had dry winters, we've had extremely wet winters. I think it's performed as good as it has or could. The issue that happened up there, I think, was just some initial settlement from the construction job, and I don't believe that that's, it hasn't continued.
Okay.
So, I think we're in good shape. With that being said, any section up, that road up there could go, depending on what happens. I mean, it's, again, it's built on a pretty steep slope. Anything could happen at any time.
I spoke with some representatives of SBI, and they said that actually, the original wagon road was on the ridge, and they, I mean, I know we're not looking for more roads to build, but they suggested that the road go across the top of the ridge as opposed to hanging off the edge of the cliff.
Yeah, I would agree.
Sound like they would.
We've talked about that, so that's, what is the cost that?
We looked at that pretty extensively, actually.
Yeah, we're going to have to. If they build it, we'd be, we'd love to use it.
We'd have to steal some property up on top. Okay, so, we're not talking, anybody talking about changing this budget, anything?
Well, I have a few items. One, I think this should have probably been the first thing on our agenda, when there's all the people in the room so they could have heard it. One thing is very striking to me is the memo you put in. In 2012, the county employed 18 Public Works Crew members. 2020, number's 13. I think if you go back probably 30, 40 years ago, I think we had a whole lot more than that even. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, you know, we have our budget hearings, and it seems like we keep a lot of our departments fairly, and some are minimally staffed, don't get me wrong, but there's some of them are fairly well-staffed, and I think it's done at the detriment of our roads. And it's something, I mean, like, right, this year, we took, what, $2 million that had been set aside for roads to help fill our budget gap, which, hey, we're having some financial difficulties, I get it, but it's been this way year after year after year after year. And I know people don't want to be cutting public safety, but I don't know where else the money is. And, you know, it's looking like kind of the same thing a little bit, so I just wanted to bring that up, just wanted to remind the board members, tell a few public out there, hey, this is an issue. I'm not blaming Richard Vila for it, but it's, it's, it happened under his watch, before his watch, before the person before him. It's an ongoing problem, and go drive our roads, and I don't need to say anymore. On another note, talk about your budget, you're looking at getting a loader, about a quarter million dollars for a loader?
Yeah, as a replacement for an existing unit.
I guess the question I'd have is, what about a skid steer instead? Have you thought about that at all?
Actually, we have that, that is included in the.
Is it like the?
Fixed assets. It's, I'm not sure what page you're looking at.
Okay, so, that's going to be, that is funded then?
Yes.
This year, on the SB1 equipment?
Yes, under, yeah, the fixed assets, we.
Page 77?
Well, you've got page numbers, I don't.
Budget notes is where it's at, so I wanted to make sure that was going, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
The items in blue, I guess I'll bring this up, I mean, I was, you know, there was some funds that were available, and I was, we were asked to, you know, how would we spend those? And we kind of focused on an amount of $2 million, it was up to four, like Supervisor Vanello mentioned, there was a couple, $2 million pulled back, you know, to help take care of overall budget. We, as staff made a, with the Public Works Committee, we sat down and talked about how to allocate those, that $2 million. And the items, if you're on that budget note page, the items in blue shows how that, the committee ultimately ended up approving how that $2 million would be spent. I just wanted to.
I appreciate that. I'm on that, on that committee, and the one thing I've got to laugh at is the Unit 881, the service truck that we're replacing, it's a 1986 Ford service truck, so.
Yeah, which doesn't run in the summertime because it's too hot.
It's too hot.
Doesn't like it.
We'd probably sell that for a historical vehicle.
Yeah, we have some old equipment, and that's a testament to our previous, briefs and current mechanic staff, but.
Kept everything running.
Kept everything running, but it's, it's hard to get parts when things break down. And, you know, some places, you know, we're also, we're also fighting, you know, trying to keep things compliant with the Air Resources Board and such, so it's time for some of this stuff to be replaced.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on?
Um, sorry.
Go ahead.
Under culverts, you went from $10,000 to $5,000? That'd be under like expenditure detail, Department 3000. So, just like, is it, my question would be, unless we have a lot of culverts already bought, that's not much, you can't buy much culverts for $5,000.
Yeah, that's kind of for miscellaneous items for that. I mean, typically, we do our covert replacement through our SB1 funds.
Okay.
So, that's, there's funds in there that'll take care of our color replacement.
Good.
Supervisor Crew, you still there?
Yeah.
Cool. Just got to check since I can't see you on the, on the screen. Need you to cough.
My video's working too, but I'm just.
Okay.
It'll come back.
Do we have any other public on this one? We will move on to 5H, the SB1 project list.
So, as the Board knows, every year, we get a projected revenue through the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, the RMRA, or what we generally call as SB1. This year, it's projected to get a little over $2.5 million is the projected revenue. And in the memo, you can see the proposed distribution of that. Again, this was also reviewed by Public Works Committee. Some of the items, like the roadside maintenance and minor repairs and materials, helps keep our overall maintenance activities moving forward, provides for materials and equipment rentals and such for that. Got set aside for equipment, set aside for medium and heavy-duty vehicles, and about $885,000 for road repairs and improvements, whether those are digouts, we want to use that for, if we have to do some resurfacing, if we're going to do pavement treatments, that's what those funds are for. In the past, we've had expenditure proposals for striping, covert replacement, and crack filling, and I wanted to bring that up because those are not part of this. And I wanted to bring that up because those are not part of this this year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, Rich, to interrupt, we need to restart this meeting and make sure it all gets on video, and I think this is more, pretty important.
Okay.
Make sure everybody can see it. Can we just take a break and restart it all?
Yes.
Real quick.
So we'll take a break, be back here at 5:00 after 11:00.
Did what you will right now, just rejoin and we'll get you back on.
Take a break in mid-sentence.
Sorry. That's a first.
You do.
So Suzanne has surgery at 4:00 today.
Good deal. That's good to hear.
Yeah, what's up, man? While it's, once she gets surgery, yeah, she's just lying in the bed with her bones not attached. Yeah.
4 o'clock today, Jeff, is that what you said?
What's that?
You said 4 o'clock today?
Yeah.
Man, well, you know, I had that little pick line problem, I didn't get home till 9:30 last night.
Oh, wow.
I got run from pillar to post. No, not us, what are you doing here? Good question.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be there tomorrow?
I don't know.
Okay, no, that's all right, that's what I thought.
I, you know, I mean, I had family sticking, I had a meeting last night, I couldn't, I couldn't shut down. And I had to be there last night, so my wife and she actually decided to stay there all night. That actually helped because she got her, got her. And my, my, she, she turned that school teacher thing, authoritarian thing on there. And she worked, she helped me.
You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or listen until the host admits you to the meeting. Goodbye.
So, um, she got her into emergency. And so at least she was thinking, she was on.
All right, I think it's good.
Yeah. She fell and broke her femur, raped her in the face. And it was the femur, but it's where the bone was, rod rose in, so it was cracked completely around it.[771.88]
This meeting back to order. And now you can finish the other half of that sentence you were starting.
Yeah.
The end. Sorry for the inconvenience of our Zoom meeting.
I know we're talking about SB one and such, and we talked about the comments made, the items that we have had in the past that we don't have this year, the striping, culvert replacement and crack filling. With regards to the culvert replacement, we're kind of in arrears with that. There's, there's funds that we've allocated in, in previous cycles that we haven't caught up with the spending yet. So I want to go ahead and get those taken care of. And not allocate any more until we, we get those taken care of.
Question for that, on that. So you have enough money for the culverts themselves?
Yes.
Okay. Cause you asked me once and no culverts.
Right. This is from, from.
Previous budgets?
Yeah. We're playing a little catch up.
Yeah, previous unspent SB one.
Yeah. And with striping, the reason I did that is so that we could, I can allocate a decent amount of dollars towards the, the road improvements and repairs. Cause I know that's been a, a priority. And also a decent set aside for medium heavy duty vehicle replacement. Again, we're trying to get our aging fleet back, you know, into the modern ages. So, but I wanted to point that out that typically we've had those other items in there. And I felt like for the striping, we could probably skip a year and get back on the program.
Last year I notified you of a couple of roads that were missing off the striping project. Did those ever get up, updated? I guess they were off of Carson.
I'd have to go back and check. Cause if we have, we have them on a kind of a four year cycle.
Right. I understand.
And so I'd have to see where they, where they fall then fell in, in that cycle.
The only thing I'm asking is that your staff keep, keep an eye on some of the striping up country. This year was very good. We didn't have that much snow plowing. So the striping actually still looks fairly decent. So it, if we have to skip, we have to, but it's, you know, for the up country, it's just a kind of a need.
Sure.
That center line. When you, when you lose that center line, it's a, it's a lot of fun.
And when this was at, before the committee, there was a request that, you know, though I have a proposed 800,000 for a set of sites for medium heavy duty vehicles, and I provide a, a list of what those items are, which I've provided here towards the bottom of my memorandum. It's two units. A unit 300, replacement of the international four by four plow and sander, 1990 do vintage. And three 18s are 1995 water truck. So I think these units may be older than our mechanic. I'm not quite sure. It's close. So I wanted to provide that in there.
Are you looking at getting a 4,000 gallon water truck also again?
I would, I think having that capacity helps in being able to go out on a job, especially in more remote locations. And have enough water to perform the functions without having to pull off and go refill somewhere and come back. So I'd like to try to maintain at least one of these larger gallon trucks for water.
Okay.
Are we looking, I mean, I know, I've seen some of those trucks that they have the super wide tires for the front and the, and the back. Or you think about something like that or just a standard eight wheeler?
Probably, probably more of the standard.
Or a 10 wheeler, I should say.
Yeah. Yeah. The standard cabin chassis that you would normally see.
I just, you know, I've seen a lot in the, in the construction vintage that, you know, for those large water trucks that they have those, you know, super wide tires on the front and back. So they're not, you know, just distributing the weight as much as possible.
And, and that's, that's certainly more critical if you're dealing with off-road conditions and you're out in the, in the.
I'm just thinking about on our roads, trying to distribute that, that weight as much as possible. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to kind of bring a little perspective. I know you all know, but I'm not sure if everyone else knows exactly how much we're talking about here. We're talking about two and a half million a year roughly that comes in in SB one funds. And the, the public works budget outside of SB one is about 3.1 million total of revenue that they get in an absent the, the one time money that always comes in from the state and all that. Just the recurring gas taxes. The, the 820,000 that the board is required for, for continuing maintenance of effort. That's it. So public works operates basically on the 3.1 in taxes and the 2.5 from SB one. So that's what 5.6 million dollars for the public works. And that takes care of all the road improvements. It takes care of plowing, takes care of potholes, tree cutting, you name it. So it's not a lot.
It is not a lot.
And those formulas, are those based on miles and trips or kind of how's, what's that metric do you know?
That's, it's actual taxes received. That's, that's.
Well, there is a model, but it's the state gets to make that behind closed doors.
I was looking at the different number, the disparity between place and other. Just it seems like it's, it's, it's just tax revenue. That's kind of how it's.
Yeah.
So we need to build more gas stations than we need to do.
Well, I think part of it is it's, I don't know if, if it's on the video record, what I stated earlier as far as how many employees they used to have versus what they have now. I mean, was that caught in the video, you think?
That was there before we had.
Okay. I wasn't sure. But I think that's, and that, that's a part of it. I mean, it's what I'd call, I call it the money scramble. It's among departments, you know, it's how money's allocated, probably. For lack of a better term, what's important to the public, what's important to the board? And I think maybe sometimes, sometimes what's important gets kind of lost in the weeds to a certain degree and all screaming and hollering.
And just to be clear, is that, I'm sorry, you cut you off, Brian? Are you done?
I'm fine.
I'm sorry. I, I was, and just to be clear, is that, that based off a tax sale or gas sales or what's the?
Yeah, those are the gas taxes.
Gas taxes.
The, the Hoota tax, the, and if, they're all in that list of, on the revenues of the, the public works budget from the, the way we had from the previous item.
And are we getting road taxes from the, the gas station up there in Buena Vista? There's one above, one below. One with the tribe, one with the other.
That's on land and trust.
Land is for us. Okay. So do we do not get taxes from that then?
I don't believe so.
That's a tough one. See. Okay.
And along that line, I mean, also as far as the funding, you got for a fair while, that vehicles paid nothing on some of the fees, like as far as like the, they don't use gas, so they pay no gas tax for using the road. Now I think they pay a minimal amount. Vehicles get better fuel mileage. Doesn't mean they're not still traveling the miles on a road. They're just paying less, less towards the roads when they fill up. But it's, yeah, it's quite honestly. I think if I'd done everything right and supervisors before me had done everything right, going back quite a few years. Or at least maybe they'd worked harder for, fought harder for roads or tried more for roads. Not that they didn't, but even more. We'd still have a major, major problem in roads. And that's if we'd cut other departments earlier, more going back 40 years ago, we'd still have a huge hole, but it's a really big hole now. And if you ask, like Chuck brought up the numbers, you got to have a public works crew to maintain the roads for whether it's, you know, the icing, clearing the roads, clearing culverts. And that's not, that's not necessarily repairing the roads. And it takes so much money just to have them to, to open up their doors. They were here in business, working the roads. And then you start saying, what's it cost to, to repair the roads or improve the roads? We're not even close. No offense, I'm no offense to whoever. It, it's just, it's a dollars and cents deal.
Like every department, I mean, we have, we're required to have so much stuff and some of the departments only have one staff member. You have to have at least a person sometimes too. It's, I mean, it's a small county problem.
And I, I think, you know, it's a, if you look at what the county roads staffing has, what's happened to it. I don't think that's happened to our other public safety units, not even close. And I, I know I've, I've been bad mouthed or beat up or however you want to call it. They can try. But I don't, cause I, I had made some comparisons between the road department and some of the public safety departments. Well, you know, when, when people are riding a donkey, roads probably weren't quite such a public safety issue. Maybe the donkey was. But now you've got people doing anywhere from 40 to 100 miles an hour on a road. And when you go off that road or you cross that center line, it's a pretty major public safety issue. Quite often people die. So roads, in my opinion, are a public safety issue. And I'd like to see them treated as such, but that takes other departments or I guess units willing. And I think it takes some of the boards sometimes willing to maybe go down a not so fun road, but it's something we got to do. And anyway, that's just what I see.
Okay. Does anybody have any more comments on SB one? I think the direction right now is to continue what, what you're running with.
Okay. So for, for the SB one, I mean, the board has to adopt a resolution and the
Okay.
project list and then we have to submit it. If, one thing I want to request is if these heavy vehicle replacements that I have listed, if they are acceptable, I would like to amend our budget to include those in as fixed asset expenditures. We wouldn't, the way the SB one works, we got this 2.5 million, but we won't get it all till this time next year. Cause we get every month, we get a slice of the pie and there's 12 slices in the pie for this. But if I have it in a budget, then maybe in the fall, you know, if there's a lead time of eight months to get these things and get these things ordered. And, and, and start that process. If I have these things included as, in the fixed asset list, then I don't have to come back and bother you gentlemen to, to get these things ordered.
You know, as far as that water truck, you might, I mean, I understand ordering it's fine, but you might, you might look at seeing if you can find it. They're probably a little bit hard to find, but they might be out there. See if you can find a, a used one, late, late model.
Yeah. If we can get a late model, I mean, that's, that has the the year, the late tier four plus or tier four final diesel engines that meet the current air resources board requirements for emissions. That's really the key. I mean, this vehicle here, I mean, it's old and, and that, and there's, there's issues related to that, but we keep it running and it functions properly. But these old vehicles have challenges with, with the emissions requirements.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the SB one projects as talked about here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, adopt resolution for fiscal year 2025, 26 SB one and exhibit a project list.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Crewe? Vice Chairman Crewe?
We're calling for a motion, for the resolution to accept. So, no, we're not hearing you. Another Zoom?
Mic's off now.
Okay.
There we go.
There you go.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us, Pat?
Okay.
We can't hear you.
Just say a thumbs up for us.
Blink twice for I.
Put your hand up to a vote yes on this resolution. Okay. That's another way. We saw his hand. Okay. Next.
Supervisor O'Netto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
So this is five zero. Okay. Now we're on to five I, discussion of possible action regarding pavement service treatments.
The board directed staff to look into pavement treatments. And we talked about specifically a chip seal as an alternative to road improvements. And pavement treatments do have their function. They are, they're primarily to further preserve the existing pavement structure. They don't add a structural component. So they don't make the road stronger or anything. So if there's a a soft spot in the road, the pavement treatment doesn't fix that. We would have to go in and do a dig out and prepare, get that taken care of, then do say do a surface treatment afterwards. So and it's a good way to preserve a lot of our, our roads that are in pretty good shape. But again, they don't repair the structurally deficient roads. And so, so I mean, there's a, it's kind of a trade off of how you want to allocate funds and tackling the challenges we have in the road system. So I, we were given the, the task of looking into what's necessary to, to do pavement treatments. And we use again, a chip seal, which is a, a, a pretty common surface treatment as a example to, to step through. First of all, currently we don't have any of the equipment that, to perform the chip seals in-house. If, and I've provided some costs here of what those equipment costs are. Granted, this is new. If we got maybe slightly used equipment or whatever, there'd be less, but we know, we're looking at expenditure of a million, a million and a half dollars to, to be able to pull off doing that function in-house. And that would, you know, I've got listed with a spray truck, a chip spreader, pneumatic tire rollers.
We already said the spray truck, you would, you'd rent that.
Rent that out. And, and we would also contract out striping. So you know, when looking at it, you know, we also reached out to some of our neighboring counties. You know, do they do chips seals? Do they not? Do they contract it out? Do they do it in-house? San Joaquin County is the only one that does it in-house. They have a seven person crew. And then they add up from two to four to that, depending on the traffic control and where they're doing the work. So depending on how the road system is, they may need more than, two may be enough. They may need four for traffic control. So you're looking at a nine to 11 person operation to do a, a chip seal. At least that's what they do down in San Joaquin County. We reached out to Calaveras. We reached out to El Dorado. We reached out to Topeka as well. And those, those other counties do not perform those in-house.
But other counties are running a cheap chip sealed process of some type.
All states. All states.
What's that?
All states are doing it.
Oh.
The entire state of Montana does.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah.
They get snow and ice and all the stuff.
Right.
Montana does it.
Yes. And so the, where was I with this? So I, I think, you know, if we want to proceed with that, I think this is an operation that should be contracted out. If we're going to contract out or, or rent the equipment to try to do some of this stuff and whatever, this is easier just to hand that off to a contractor. That way the scheduling gets done and you don't have to worry about, you know, getting the availability of equipment if we're going to rent. And then when we're done, having a, a striper come in and come in on a timely manner. It's best to kind of pack a jet together as a, as a complete unit and, and farm that out. As Supervisor Cornell has mentioned, yeah, chip sealing is done. You know, it's very common. You mentioned the state of Montana. My experience when I was with the state of Wisconsin, we did a lot of chip sealing of the roads. So yes, the wear and tear from snow plows kind of work into the life expectancy of it, but by and large, you know, if, if you're crews are trained properly, you know, just to, don't set that plow so heavy onto the pavement, you know? So it's, it would take a little bit of a.
I, just for sideways on this. I asked GSA to look into at Pioneer Park, their parking lot, there was a grant, you know, for rubberized chip seal. And so I'm wondering if your staff need to start looking into see if there's any grants for that. Cause they're trying to get people to use the rubberized, you know, which is the old tires. Just stinks like hell for a while, I guess, excuse the language. But you know, maybe there's some other grants that, you know, we can get to go in that, in that process too.
Yeah. And that's, that's one of the, you mentioned, yes, asphalt rubber chip seal. And we looked into that as well. Along with the conventional chip seal, there's micro surfacing, which adds a little bit of structure. Say if you have a, a road that's got some undulations and you need to kind of level it out, use it as a leveling course as well. And you use that in conjunction with a, a seal product. The, and so we looked into that and, you know, there's attached to my report here, my memos is, is the results of staff's research on this, looking at the different types of pavement treatments. I, I think if we wanted to move forward with a, a, a seal type of treatment, it seems like the rubberized chip seal gives us more benefit. It seems to have a light, longer life expectancy. Because of the rubber as part of the, 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 the structure there, it seals the cracks. It, it will, the seal wider cracks. Gives you some traction as well.
It's up to what? Three quarter inch is what it said in your memo?
From what we've determined. Interesting, there's a, they put a, when they buy tires, there's a, they treat the tires so that the UV rays don't deteriorate the tires. Well, that material goes into this stuff as well. Cause it, what this is, is ground up tires. So when you place that out on the, onto the pavement, you know, in this application, it keeps the, the, the surface from oxidizing because that's, it's kind of built in. So that's kind of a side benefit, if you want to say, with regards to that product.
I will say this, I was talking to Jack O'Brien, and if I understood him correctly, they use that the AR, asphaltic rubber on a section of, of Fiddletown Road about from the intersection up to like around Burke Ranch somewhere in there. And it actually, it held up. It's either right when I first came in office or before, and it's, it's still looking pretty good. So it held up pretty well.
Um, you know, we, we reached out, we talked with a vendor. Of course, a vendor is going to give you all sorts of bells and whistles and whatever. But they've got, you know, roads that, you know, they, that they've done, that the stuff has lasted 15, at least 15 years. Of course, they're more of a lower volume residential roads. But again, you know, they've got, there is some proof that the stuff will last.
Is it available locally then? I mean, not like to, not to the, not to Amber County, but like regionally, we can get that easily accessed.
Yeah. I mean, these, the, the people that do that kind of work, work out of the valley.
Okay.
You know, and.
My, my thought is, I mean, we should pick some roads, get it going, evaluate it and maybe whenever time's right. If it's something we want to do longer term, then look at equipment and kind of just use as a really good pilot project to go from there.
When this was originally voted in, it was voted in as a pilot project.
Yeah.
So it was like, we have to try it once. There's a new member of the council of genius down in Jackson at Mel's in the morning. He's a retired commissioner, which is a supervisor from the state of Montana. And he read this in the paper and he was, he's eager. He would, he would happily come speak today or speak to anybody. He was the architect of this exact same idea in Montana. And he said, the biggest problem public works had with it is they had to work way harder because we had enough money to cover our roads. And they, it's, it's like a ravenly reviewed project. I brought a local contractor who does chip sealing into our yard and showed him our equipment. And I said, if you had to pull it off with what's sitting right here, could you do it? And he said, yes, there's one piece of equipment is all that we would need to pull this off. Like we have it here for a pilot project right now. He said, we need, we need a chip spreading box that hangs on the back of the truck. So I'm willing to buy that personally. Out of my discretionary funds, if we could try one project with what we have, and if it's successful, then we can look at spending all that money. But I mean, chip seals, bring a truck that has chips in it. Put the, have, have the company come out, they spray, we spread the chips, we sweep it off. And then there's another treatment that goes on top of it and we can do it with what we have. Our yard looks much like Wayne Vinseguera's yard. I know our stuff's old, but so are all of our local contractors. And I could show you roads all over this county that are chip sealed that have lasted, well, most of Surrey, well, huge portion of Surrey Junction is. Half of Casey Ranchats is. This guy, this retired commissioner, he's looking for somebody to chip seal his road because he'd rather chip seal his own driveway than pave it.
I will say this Logan, along that line, I saw in here, they wanted what $400,000 for a, a chip spreader. I mean, I was going to bring it up, but you, you beat me to it. Thank you. But I thought, I don't think Burgess paving has a $400,000 chip spreader. And I know John Hertz, I know John Hertz, a damn well wouldn't buy a $400,000 chip spreader.
I know a local contractor who just bought one. It was $2,500. He said, one that hangs on the back of a truck might be up to $4,000 or $5,000.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, they do, they do chip sealing. Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I, they do, they do chip sealing work all over the county, and they don't have no $400,000 chip spreader. Now, maybe if you're doing a million miles a year, okay, maybe you want to buy one. But, yeah, I think, um, I think we, you could do one without, without breaking the bank and try it and see how it works.
So we bid out the oil, and we could bid out the delivery of chips. We have a great spot in the north, I guess, northern part of, well, no, southeast part of the yard that has the retaining wall already there. We could stage our chips. I mean, the point of this was if we find an extra $20,000, we can put it on the road, and we don't have to wait for a $6 million something in order to fix the road. We can, we can use small money to, to accomplish something.
No, I like the idea, but you'd stage the chips probably on the job, where they normally.
Depending on the job, if you had a job with a big turnout, stage it right there.
Yeah.
And then we would bid out striping. But I, I think we have the equipment right now, minus one piece. I mean, is a rubber-tired pneumatic roller better than the rollers we have? Yes. Is a, this type of sweeper better than the sweepers we have? Yes, but what we have now is what we, we can do something with it.
I would say if you do it, I would not do it on a high-speed road, for your starters.
Well, also, like, there's a road that is worth considering. I mean, there may be a digout or two, there might be a couple of things we have to do. But there's a large company willing to possibly make a contribution to the county to fix one specific road, and that's Climax Road. And they would, they want to offer this donation so that a weight limit sign doesn't go on it, because it's going to cost them a lot of money to go around. So we have a road that we could do, that we could get a contribution from outside potentially. And that's a, the speed limit on that road's 30 miles an hour. So, anyway, I just think it's possible, as do multiple people. And this retired commissioner, he said, he's good friends, he's actually trying to get his retired Public Works director to move here. And he said he would be happy to come talk, meet, conference call, and just explain how they, they, they built their project. And it, they ended up just covering roads. And they came from a very small county that struggled with roads, same position we're in.
Do we have a list of roads already kind of picked out or looked at, or?
We need one.
I mean, there's a number of roads that would work. Trying to think of one that would be a good example that you may be, like, say Clinton Road, for example. The upper section of Clinton Road, pavements, you know, it's, it's been weathered, it's got a few cracks in it. That would be a good.
Well, what about the example of Climax?
We can look at Climax, I don't know, I might have to go back and, I have to go out and see how much work is needed for that as far as, like I say, mentioned with digouts or whatever. Because it does, again, this doesn't fix any structural deficiencies in your road.
Right.
I think too, if we were to do a test case, I wouldn't use Climax. I'd pick a low-speed road, not a lot of traffic.
The only reason I'm suggesting that is because there might be money there to do it.
About part of taboo, the, um, yeah, I, I agree with Supervisor O'Netto that, that Climax isn't going, we don't want to do our first one there.
Well, no, we don't want to, right.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to do it somewhere kind of hidden, back in the back.
That's what I was thinking, parts of taboo, but.
I have plenty of courts up in my area, you know, that.
You, let's start on.
Never been touched.
I mean, something like that, if, if a base is good.
Forest no.
Well, maybe not a court, no, but maybe a, a through road.
I'd start on a parking lot in, at like Pioneer Park. A parking lot would be a great place to practice.
Yeah, no, I mean, and, and that's something where you're not going to have a lot of traffic pressure because guys are going to be learning what they're doing, how to do it. You don't want to be out there with, you know, 1,000 cars zooming by you. I know, I wouldn't want to be.
Parking lot would be perfect.
But can we use any of this money that we have on there to practice in a parking lot? Since we're not supposed to use.
That's a good part, that's a good point.
It's training.
Yeah, we can't use gas taxes on the parking.
We can find a small road somewhere, and I think Calaveras County, I heard, did some chip sealing on some roads that didn't have a good base, and they were, I haven't checked on it, but I heard they were sorry. It didn't work out real well. So I think you want to have a halfway decent base and just a worn, worn asphalt, and it probably worked pretty good.
I think some of the roads, so you look at them, I think it's, it's that, that, that early mild cracking you see where it's going to be, the weather is going to be a problem eventually, like, and like eventually, like, as the next year or two. That'd be some, something to look at, I think, too. I mean, I, I read through your whole report, and I could see where there's, you know, certain applications definitely are warranted for certain types of torn-up road surfaces. Some of them obviously need something a little bit, a little bit extra, I mean, the digouts, et cetera. I mean, I drive Martin Lane pretty regular, and it's like, I don't know if that'd be a good one or not, it's like.
Yeah, that one is.
It's got a lot, it's got a lot of other issues, too.
Yeah, I, that one would need a, um, probably a, a micro-surfacing done first, then a chip. But it's, that's, that one we looked at, because I thought, well, you know, we just did digouts out there. And we went and drove on it, I go, I don't know, this is pretty on the edge.
Yeah, it is, that's, that's why, I don't know.
Needs to be, that one, I don't know if I'd want to, we could try it with a, with a, with a, with a double application with a micro-surface than a chip.
Sure.
Or it may just, that one maybe one of her just have to overlay and be done.
Yeah.
I was hoping that one was a little better shape, that'd be a good example.
It's on that clay out there, too, you know how it is. It gets, it gets water in the road surface, and that clay just turns to.
So I've talked to people from multiple states who have moved here, and all of them said that that's what happened in their former state. And they all were just, everybody got excited like the ice cream truck was coming when the chip seal truck came by. And that's the response. And then when I come back to my county, I just hear all the reasons that it's not as good as paving. Well, I'm aware, it's not as good, but it does add some strength to your road, and it seals and keeps the water from getting in it. So if we can keep the water out of our roads, we can keep the hydraulic pressure from, out from underneath it, and we can retain them. And if we do some slower roads and smaller roads, I mean, it could last decades. And all you have to do to fix a chip-sealed road is chip-seal it again, and then you have double the amount on there. I just don't see another alternative. I mean, we, there's no other plan to fix all these little roads.
So how many miles of road do you think we could do this here? I mean, bidding it out versus trying it ourselves? And do we have a, I mean, I know it's kind of a wide-open question there, but.
Yeah, I mean, if we're sitting here, we, we'd have to, you know, put something out to bid, which we could probably put together if, um, we could pick some roads now whether, depends how much you want to go in and get into that process. The longer we take to figure out which roads we want to do, we'll lose this year.
I would suggest you probably have a pretty good idea of some roads. I'm sure, sounds like everybody drives enough, they'd probably figure something out, too, get in your business, but get something done.
I, I don't have the confidence that we have the correct equipment to do a proper job. Now, I don't want to, I'm not trying to pick an argument with anybody or whatever. But we're not trying to fix a driveway. We're on a public road, we need to have the proper equipment to get this thing done correctly.
Is there an opportunity to cross-train? I don't know if that's even possible, to bid it out to where we have our guys.
I think what Supervisor Cornell is suggesting right now is that maybe you step aside and allow someone else to come in and show you how it's done.
Well, that's fine.
And I think that's, that's probably what we need to try. Maybe it ends up being an abject failure, but we will try, we'll try something new.
And for that matter, I mean, you probably have what? I don't know if Burgess, I don't know if Burgess is still doing much paving, you know, for years they did, and they did a lot of chip sealing. I know John Hertzig has done chip sealing for years. And I don't know if your, if your friend Jason has done much chip sealing.
Jason has volunteered to help us try the pilot project and be right there with us to explain.
What I mean is, has he done much chip sealing?
He's done more than we have.
Oh, oh, I'm saying, I, John Hertzig, if he'd help, if he'd want to help us out, he's done chip sealing for, I, I'd say probably 40 years at least.
Right.
And all I know is.
The commissioner's willing to volunteer, he said he, he'll be there, he's jumping up and down, excited about this.
Well, a lot of times you find somebody that knows what they're doing, they can help you a lot. I went out there, did a couple guys from AFPD, and showed them something about fallen trees. And young guys, they wanted to learn, and they're like, hey, just, you know, it's, this is kind of what I know, and here's how you do it. And I remember when I was a, when I was a young, young guy, which is, whether it's, whether it's an individual or an entity, when you're young, sometimes them old dogs and teaching stuff really quick, really simply. I had an old man, one time he came by, I was fighting a tree and having a hard time, and I was at the point where I was getting decent but not good. And the old guy said, "Don't you know how to do that?" I said, "Oh, yeah, I'm just having a hard time, this stupid tree." And he said, "No, there's an easier way." And it was, what he showed me, took two minutes. I felt like a dummy, I didn't think about it, and it made my life a whole lot simpler, and, and I did a lot better job. And I think you could have the same thing if you get a, a Hertzig or Burgess, or maybe if Jason has that much background, just to come out with a crew and say, "Hey, guys, do it like this."
And I'd like our crew to know that we can, we can accomplish things with what we have. And I know we could have $100 million worth of equipment, but we don't. We have what we have, and there's, like, all of us businesses outside of there have to pull it off with what we can afford in this small county, and we pull it off.
I think, I think we're in agreement with you, just a matter of how we get there, and I'm, I'm, I'm all, I'm all game trying, trying a project or two at least, and seeing how it works. And I think it'd be very helpful to have somebody there that has experience, just saying, here, here's, here's when you put the oil down, here's when you should probably put the chips on the oil, here's how long you should let it sit on, on the oil before you broom it, just that type of stuff.
So as we're talking about all this, do we need to make it different surface treatments for different areas? You know, because I know like in the high country, we're doing chip sealing, we need to have an overlay on it because you're, you're snow plowing? So, kind of my question.
Ultimately, yeah, that, that will, there will be certain things that need to be tweaked for whatever we're, we're doing. But I think step one is to get something done and look at it and see whether or not it's worth replicating elsewhere.
So how do we do this?
Well, give us direction, give us, uh, uh, direction to, to go do it. And, and Supervisor Cornell's going to buy a piece of equipment, and we're going to put, uh, bring someone in that knows what they're doing with this. And we will have the road crew do it, if that's what you want to do.
And I would, I would offer this, if Supervisor Cornell is going to do that, and if he would like, means they could, they say, "I got too much money in my discretionary account," I'd be willing to help.
Ten times more than the rest of us.
I would love to be able to help you, I really, really would.
We don't want your negative money.
Yeah, for the people that don't know that.
He didn't make it negative, though, so I wouldn't blame Supervisor Epperson.
Supervisor Epperson had not very much money in his account.
When he started.
Supervisor Crew, any thoughts on all this, since you're on the Public Works with me?
We still haven't been able to get him back.
Oh.
Uh, so we can't hear.
Fine language.
Yeah. We can, yeah.
That is not a good thing.
I think he would like to say something. You want us to break for five minutes, we can try it again.
Please.
Yeah, let's try it again.
Okay.
Not, can you get him on a cellphone or something?
And he's on the.
Could you get him on a cellphone and put him by a mic? Would that, would that work?
Let, give us five minutes and let us restart it. Okay, we're going to restart, everybody rejoin, sorry about that.
We can, thank you very much. I know you got words on this, this, uh, thing. So what's your thoughts on the pavement surface treatments?
Well, I agree that, one, we don't want to stop unbridled enthusiasm if there's a group that wants to try a test section. And as Nick said, it could go from a roaring success to an abject failure. But we haven't really risked that much, I'm all for it.
Cool. So who do we want to wrangle this experiment?
Well, I think Supervisor Cornell's got the connections right now.
Okay.
So, um.
Absolutely.
Do we want, however, we want to have him coordinate with, with me and Rich? And we can make the assignment, and do we want to pick a road? Rich, you got thoughts on a road?
I'll have to think about that, because I'm trying to think way, an appropriate road that's not a major road right now, so that we have some issues or whatever, we're not messing something up or it's not a major thing, so.
It doesn't have to be perfect, so, um.
What about a, just throwing out ideas? If you head down Pine Grove Volcano Road and immediately take a left on, well, you end up on Tellarium. So those are our roads, and those are a subdivision, those are roads people would be going 10 miles an hour on.
Yeah.
Something like that. Also, somebody on that road is one of the biggest proponents of us fixing our roads, so their road would get fixed first.
It's a motivation to do it right.
Well, we'll be informed if we don't.
Be patient with us.
How long of a road are we talking?
Well, there's, it's multiple little short roads, that whole, that little neighborhood in there. And, um, so you could just, we could pick a short one, we could measure out how much. so you could just, we could pick a short one. We could measure out how much a transfer of chips covers and, or how much one truck actually of oil covers and then.
It'd be the chips that you worried about the most.
No, the oil's the, we can get a bunch of chips. It's the oil that's the
Okay.
big deal.
The oil's expensive, too.
Yep. It's the same price if you have them come spray it out as, as if you, or if you just buy your own truck and go buy the oil from them. It's the same price. So it makes no sense for us to have another piece of equipment to maintain. A sensitive piece of equipment.
Okay, so this would be a direction to staff, then?
Direction to staff, we will get it done and let everybody know when it happens.
Okay.
And, um,
Sure.
You can come watch.
What time does all the staff meet? Like, at the end of the day, is everybody there in the staff quarters for a moment? Or most?
Yeah.
So I'd like to come by and given upon St. Crispin's Day speech, if that's okay. Once more over the hill.
I mean, I'd love to pull this off. Don't, don't get me wrong. I've just, I want to make sure that if we get into it that, that we don't get into, oh crap, now we can't get this done because this, we don't have the right thing here or it broke down or whatever. So I, I want, I want to make sure, I want it to be a positive experience. So that's.
Well, I want to try it with almost no cost in equipment. All we would lose would be, well, we're not even going to lose it. The oil and the chips will be on the road. So.
Yeah.
You know, one thing you might want to look at, I know when they did Shenandoah Road, I think, I don't remember, I think it was, I don't remember if it's an A, I don't think it's an AR. I think it's a regular chip seal. For some stupid reason, I don't know if the road was cooler or if it pitched or something on the road, but where they had some of those, I think it was a live oak especially, live oak trees, the chips didn't really stick very well. They, they blew off. I don't know if there was sap on the road or what, but.
But, you know, that would be.
You might want to look into that.
That would be my request is that we do it, you know, an overlay, you know, oil, chip, oil again so that I could see it for the high country because that's something I got to have for the snow.
So it's called a fog treatment and it's what they did in downtown Ione. They chip sealed it. Everybody raged against them for it, but they weren't finished. Then they came and put the fog coat in and everybody thinks they dug it out and put blacktop in there.
Yeah.
The whole town thinks that they redid it. All they did was applied that last surface of fog coat.
That was a major public relations nightmare. They did not say anything they seldom do. That was the biggest issue.
Well, it's the state. We, we can say something.
That's fair. No, we did.
Look at how many people show up to the meetings.
So that, that is my quest out of this, just, you know, direction.
Should I make a motion that a?
I don't think we need a motion. I think we need a direction, but agreement that we need to have this experiment done? Supervisor Neto?
Yeah, sure.
Definitely. Yes, yes.
Yes.
And I'm coming to you for money. Yes, I agree that.
Okay, and Supervisor?
Out of your.
Crew.
Yes, I'm all for it.
Okay, we have, we have direction to staff. So we're going with that.
It all fails, hanging on me. I'll take it.
We will. That is no hesitation.
I know. I'm doing Forest Noel first.
Okay.
We won't have failure, just the, the rate of success. I guess.
There you go. There you go. Pull them out of the fire.
So.
Yeah.
I, I, I just, I see the first, you know, when the, when the gentleman pulls the bucket out and the spreader comes on it and he doesn't start up the truck fast enough. I mean, you get that plump.
Well, that's what the spreader's for. It's actually this, you can just sit there and.
Okay.
Exactly. You gotta, you gotta have a spreader of some sort in order to get an even distribution. Otherwise you're just going to dig.
No, I know that, but I.
And in the fu, oh, sorry.
But I've also seen, I've seen the gentleman that, that can operate a dump truck without a spreader and, you know, with gravel and just does this even job. And it, it, you know, there is people out there that have that, that fine motor control.
In the future, all the attachments necessary for this are available for a skid steer. We could have a skid steer chip sealing machine. You could get the chip spreader, you can get the broom, it all can, you can get it all on a chip seal. I mean, on a, on a skid steer.
Skid steer. They're quick to.
And the box for a skid steer is two grand.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Rich. So we're on to 5J. Amador County Recreation Agency requests for modification of maintenance contract for Pioneer Park and Fiddletown Park from $33,000 annually to $46,846 annually.
Right. Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Thirty seconds left.
Yeah, you got one. Thirty seconds.
Uh, GSA Director Glenn Spitzer, uh, this is for approval of a contract with Accra. The Accra's been maintaining Pioneer Park and Fiddletown Park 10 years at 33,000 per year. And this contract would increase that amount to $46,846.75 annually. To adjust for inflation and other costs. And Michael's here from Accra to, to speak on it.
Good morning or good afternoon?
Afternoon now. You're too late.
Chairman and, and members of the board, Accra has been maintaining the two parks for 10 years at the same price. And it has really caught up with us in terms of our budget. And we are doing everything we can to update all of our agreements. There, technically, there's never been a formal agreement, which is why this is coming to the board. We have had some stuff in writing where we have agreed on the price, but this is a formal agreement which protects both agencies regarding all the insurance issues and puts us into the actual cost of what it costs Accra to do this today. And so I would recommend that the board approve this so that Accra can be made whole and break even on its maintenance costs of the two parks.
I've got a question. It looks like you have something to be done in the future, remove all shrubbery along fence by road in Fiddletown?
Well, there were some, so there's two pieces to this agreement. One is just basic ongoing maintenance. And there's a second piece that if the county requests that certain projects be executed, that there is a, a separate list of what those projects might be and that Accra, that the county could then contact Accra and we could work out something to do a special project.
So would that be in addition to?
That would be in addition to the maintenance agreement. Yes.
Uh, I was wondering why that, when you say remove all shrubbery along fence by the road, are you talking, uh, removing the plants or what? It's attachment B.
An attachment B? That, was that on the, uh, that's in the routine maintenance?
That's in the, that's in B. So to be, to be clear, everything on attachment A is covered as, as required for that fee. And attachment B would be the, the items that would, the county would pay extra for.
Okay.
And only if requested in writing by the county.
Okay. I just, I mean, my concern would be, I mean, if you're talking outside defense for like road clearance, fine. If you're talking removing the shrubbery, heck, that's your, that's your noise barrier and everything else in that park. Wouldn't want to take it out.
And I'm not exactly sure where that shrubbery is, but that would come from a, a written request, so we can, we can even remove that.
Where'd it come from, this request?
Uh, there are occasionally sight distance problems for drivers, so some of those, some of the additional concerns would be related to the traffic.
So are they driving into the park or what?
Sight distance, being able to see around the landscaping.
We're coming off, we go across the.
Safe distance. You have to have a safe distance of, again, it's an optional project.
Okay. I didn't see it. Other than if you're trying to make road clearance for cars, I really didn't see a reason for it, so, okay.
And then Pioneer Park, it has your name on it here. Chairman, I was just making, we got a shrubbery issue here, we had another one over here. I was making sure the.
So it's, you know, a lot of the shrubbery around there, but I've got a group which is UCCE, um, the master gardeners and the Firewise, um, through the Fire Safe Council are, I have, have funding to redo the, uh, all the trees and everything around the Veterans Hall. And so we're actually going to, this June, we're going to do a workday, pull all that material out of there. And then in the fall, they'll actually do a replant and they'll actually have the design. So that'll come before the board at that time. But right now, to match what we're required by law as zero to five, um, we need to clear that area around the building. So that's, that's supposed to be happening here pretty quick. So that's just maintenance. Because whoever, whoever planted some of the plants around the Veterans Hall, Glenn was, was up there. They planted off the beams of the Veterans Hall six inches. The plant, the, the bush base is this big around. And you're, you're like, really? I'm so surprised we haven't broken cement up there. I mean, there's a couple cracks, but, you know, so we'll have fun, you know, cleaning this all up.
I think in the 17th, they're looking at having a volunteer day possibly, maybe. Didn't talk of that. Be fun.
So, um, anybody from the public talk on this? Supervisor Crew? Oh, did we lose you again?
No, no.
Oh, there he is.
Okay.
Is this, is that in next year's budget, Chuck? Or is this an add-on?
No, it is. As soon as we heard about the request, we put it in.
Okay.
So as we're talking about this, how is our budget? You know?
We're at about $200,000.
Okay. Are you going to be able to create your magic?
I think we can close it from there.
Okay.
Take it from roads.
No.
Okay.
Five, uh, discretionary fund.
Yeah, exactly.
I might have approved the last.
You didn't hear that.
10 years ago, I was on that.
Okay. We need a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Okay. Supervisor Epperson did the first. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, sir. And so we need to call for the vote.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Accra, thank you.
Thank you, sirs. Last item is review and possible approval of the April 22th Board of Supervisor meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Unless there's any changes.
I move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
First by Supervisor Cornell, second by Supervisor Epperson. Call for the vote.
Uh, Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
So this meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, May 27th at 9:00 AM. Closed session begins at 8:30. And my wife has a surgery appointment at four o'clock today. Yay. And thank you very much. And this meeting is concluded.
Doc, are we still meeting with Garrett?